And basically, signatories have agreed that any time that they launch an object into space, it will be registered into this database. The, it's very, very straightforward, basically, you know, what you're launching, when you're launching it, what its basic functions are, what orbit it's going to be in, things like that, but it's, it's very straightforward. And so that helps to keep up with what has been launched and what orbits these spacecraft are in, and that would be very supportive to managing space traffic on orbit. And finally, there, there's another agreement, the Moon Treaty, that was put into force in 1979. And, and basically, it goes back, really kind of builds on the, the Outer Space Treaty in that you, you, no nation can declare sovereignty over any celestial body. And it builds on that, but there have only been to date, I think, I think it's like 21 countries have signed off on this particular agreement. So, in a, kind of a summary, the fundamental principles behind these treaties and, and agreements and convention are listed there in the top. Basically, space is free, open for use by whoever would like to use it. Nonappropriation basically means that you can't declare sovereignty, you can't go, you know, to the moon, or to an asteroid, or to Mars, and plant your flag and say, "This is my territory." It also, obviously, the application of international law, peaceful uses of outer space, very, very, very important point. There are other agreements that talk about cooperation, we talked about liability and the state responsibilities, but all of this stuff goes down to these three core principles that are listed there, and I'll not repeat that. I'm going to hand over now to my colleague Audrey, who's going to talk you through some of the, the more esoteric parts.
I don't know if I agree with that. Well, well, now we're going to talk about the utilities for the house. So, um, so this is, as responsible operators in space, you need to be aware of these three subject areas that I'll briefly review. So it's sort of, I think it's less esoteric and, and more, you know, nuts and bolts. So we'll start off with standards, speaking rather generically, but standards are, are, well, they're important in, in a broad context, but they're also very important for space actors. And the, sometimes standards are just for harmonization, to make sure that you're getting quality products, which is really important, you, when you're going to launch something into space, but also sometimes standards are incorporated into regulations and licenses. So, i- it's good to be aware of this in a general sense, at the very least. There's, the preeminent body perhaps would be the International Organization for Standardization, ISO, which has a broad range of standards that they develop, but they have a Technical Committee 20, which is developing standards for aircraft and space vehicles. And some of their notable areas for space actors of importance are the standards that are developed for safe launch operations and for space debris mitigation. The ITU, which we'll talk about in the next group of slides, also develops standards, they're called recommendations, that are, could be voluntary, but are oftentimes brought into treaties and made mandatory regarding space operations. So that's another example of a body that develops standards. The next area is radio spectrum. So, ac- assured access to spectrum from the point in space that you plan to operate is mission critical for any space operator. So, you also, as a responsible space actor, when you're out in space, you have to be sure that you are not causing harmful interference to other operations. So it's kind of two sides of a coin, so that, that, I'll just lay that as an introduction to the topic. So, space actors have to work at a couple of different levels at least, starting from the mi- the mission design stage of a space project, because you want it, you have to know what sort of spectrum you'll be utilizing to make all kinds of design choices for your system. And it can have implications on the equipment you use, and, and your bandwidth, and, and in all aspects of your operation. So, consider this early, don't wait until the last minute. And you're going to need to work with a national regulator, because as we learned from Angie's presentation, the Outer Space Treaty, you're, you're relying on a member state to represent you in, in international processes, including at the ITU. So you need national licensing, but then you'd also, you're going to want to be aware and deal with the International Telecommunication Union, the ITU, which is another UN body, but this is the one that has the specialized role in managing international access to, to spectrum and the orbits, in terms of use of spectrum for space operations. So we don't need to get into all these gory details about the ITU. I love to do that, but I, we, we won't talk about it now, but you need to know that it, it is an intergovernmental organization, it adopts treaties and, and other kinds of things, including the standards I mentioned. And you should know that a lot of space operators are members of the ITU as something called sector members. They can participate quite actively at the working levels. So if you have an idea of a new kind of space service, like in orbit servicing perhaps, you can become a member of the ITU, and you can actually bring in work about how, what kind of spectrum requirements you would need, and how you could share spectrum with other users, how you can implement your system without causing harmful interference. And you can work side by side with regulators at the lower levels of the ITU. It's a very, very important opportunity for, for new space actors. And you can also get your administration to help represent your interests in these various fora. And if you're interested in more information about how this works, where the ITU has a global networking forum on Wednesday afternoon at 15:50, and you'll hear all about it. So going to a little more detail, because this is such an important area, the ITU convenes a world radio conference about every four years, and this is where all the countries come together and adopt updates to the international radio regulations, which are a treaty-level document, 2,000 pages long, that have all the international frequency allocations, what frequency bands are intended for which radio services, all the processes and procedures for coordination of space systems and terrestrial systems, and ultimately, how you can obtain assured access to the orbit and spectrum, so that your operation gets international recognition and protection from harmful interference. So that is what the ultimate goal is, I don't know why, okay, for a space operator to work in partnership with their notifying administration, to work through the ITU's processes. It's a multi-year process, but it yields to you this assurance that your spectrum rights and your orbital position will be respected. So, very important, very complicated, people often hire experts to help them through the process. We also have, the ITU has great expertise, and they help people through the processes. We have some ITU people even here today. So, do, do, just the, the main mission is, consider this early in your process, and remember, spectrum and orbits are limited natural resources, there's a lot of competition for these resources. So, that's another reason to, to plan early. And on top of all this, all countries have licensing requirements, not only for your space station, but for the services you provide in country. So, being in this, this area is a great career path. I'll just leave it at that. And then finally, another so-called utility is the Regulations Concerning Export Control. And this is another scary area, and it's very political, it's about, you know, national security, it's because the very nature of space systems is really dual-use technology that have military applications, even if you intend to just use them for commercial. It's an area where you, you need some expertise to, to safely guide you both through the, the international, there's both mandatory and non-binding international law concerning export control, and then there's national laws concerning export control, and the infamous one is from the US, the ITAR, International Traffic and Armed Regulation. So that's another area that's very highly regulatory, very specialized, but ignore it at your peril, because it could endanger your project or even your own people. So, just get the guidance you need early in your project in this area. So, that's what we have about utilities, and now we'll turn it over to Robyn to talk about the rooms.
So, we've now looked at an overview of the big-picture international law, policy, non-binding, binding, we have a couple of those elements here, but then it's important to note that it can be replicated as many as 200 times in each of the national sets of policies and regulations. So we won't go too much in-depth into this as this part of the discussion, just because it's so diverse and can be applied differently to different countries. But it's important to note that there are many different motivations and elements that fit into a, a national policy, strategy, legal framework. So, for example, countries will have to analyze the different objectives for their chosen space activities, the balance between civil, military, commercial activities, which they want to encourage or promote, all of that might fit in into the underlying elements of national policies. You also need to look at what international commitments the country has made and signed on to, both in treaties, as well as the broader customary international law that might still apply to every country. And so, once that is reconciled with national principles, national interests, and the international level, those can kind of feed in together through each country's unique legislative and policy development process. Ultimately, you look for policies that help delineate the roles and responsibilities between any of the various government agencies that might be stakeholders in space, both from a program perspective and from a regulatory perspective. And there is often the role of capacity building, cooperation, and discussion among countries to support each other in developing strong, responsible national policies. So, this is just a, a quick map, a cutoff there on the edge, but demonstrating just how diverse national space policy and involvement in space has become. These are just the countries that operate satellites in orbit, I don't remember when this is up to date as of, but it is changing all the time, as more and more countries procure or develop themselves satellites for, for launch and operation. And so, all of this means that all of these countries can have their own national law and, and policy for space. It's also important to note that even countries that don't operate the satellites themselves still have a stake in space, because many countries, just about all countries, I would say probably, receive some kind of space services when it comes to communications, navigation, all sorts of applications from space that are sold and, and used on Earth. So, really, the entire globe is interconnected in how these national and international policies function for space. Finally, we'll get to a, a personal favorite topic of mine, norms of behavior in space, and how you help to navigate this house. So, a big challenge, we've just said how diverse national policies are, there's different languages, different ways of thinking, different interests, how do you reconcile all of that? To look at what behaviors are responsible, acceptable, what are irresponsible, what are challenging, and how do you get countries and commercial actors, non-governmental actors, to work together to make space safe, sustainable, secure, and stable? And so, we have a couple examples of norms of behavior that are being developed as we speak, or have been largely discussed and supported in the international community. One example would be the Long-Term Sustainability Guidelines, which are voluntary, non-binding, and were adopted by the UN General Assembly in 2019. There are norms and guidelines on orbital debris mitigation, there are ongoing discussions in the United Nations, such as the Open-Ended Working Group on Reducing Space Threats Through Rules, Norms, and Principles of Responsible Behavior. And these cover a wide range of topics, I've put the two main categories up here on the slide, and that's the safety and sustainability on the one hand, and stability and security on the other. Largely, these are discussed in slightly different forums in the United Nations and in other international organizations, but they're not perfect stovepipes, there's still a lot of overlap when it comes to challenges like debris. So it's not a, a perfect divide, but it does help to conceptualize some of the different paths that you can take with norms of behavior. And speaking of the different paths you can take, this here is a, a framework that I've developed, looking at what are some of the key decisions that a space actor might want to make if they are trying to develop or promote the development of norms of behavior in space. So I identify four key decision points. First of all, how are you going to establish buy-in within your organization, nationally, as a company, et cetera? Who is going to be taking the lead on introducing and promoting? What norms are you actually going to be looking for in terms of their content? That's of course, step one. You also need to think about, how are you introducing and discussing your proposed norm internationally? How are you introducing it to the world? And so, there are a lot of different trade-offs with different approaches. Some approaches might focus on bilateral relations, building up with partners and like-minded states, so that you get that initial push going, and it might be a little easier to come up with common language among groups with common interests, but that can have the challenge of exclusivity. So maybe you want to take the path of a large, multilateral organization that is inclusive of all countries. How are you including or discussing commercial and non-governmental actors in that mix? Third, we have the selection of a mechanism for establishing the norm. Funny enough, there is no international norm defining norm, so that's a bit of a challenge, where lots of different organizations might interpret that differently. I have my definition there on the right, which is generally accepted standard of appropriate behavior. So this just means common agreement on what behaviors are acceptable or not, and that's broad enough that you can use any kind of mechanism to establish that. Treaties can be used to establish norms, non-binding guidelines can be used to establish norms, or even individual actors just saying, "Hey, I think this behavior is acceptable, this behavior is not acceptable." Enough groups, enough countries do that, then maybe you have a norm on your hands. And then finally, what is your target to get that critical mass, which means the, the swell of support and engagement in the norm, to kind of tip it over the edge to something that is, is generally believed to be accepted across the community? You may focus on a small group that has the relevant capabilities to your norm, or if it's something involving just about everyone, then maybe you need a significant majority of just about everyone. So, lots of decisions, the main point I want to leave you with on norms is that there's no one-size-fits-all solution to this challenge. We are going to take many different paths to develop norms, and it's important to try to tailor your approach to what you are trying to achieve, what behaviors you're focusing on. And so, now we've given a lot of the overview of the framework, we're going to dive into what this looks like from a practical standpoint in terms of responsible operations in space, and I'm going to hand it over to Angie Buckley again.
Okay, thanks, Robyn and Audrey, and this, we're going to dive into this, but it's not going to be a very deep dive at all, because we're trying to finish up here shortly so that we can get into the, the real purpose of this workshop and, and get the hands-on activity going on quickly. But there are a lot of areas that one must consider when you're thinking about responsible operations in space, and it applies to every single activity that goes on during the process of developing your spacecraft, your launch vehicle, actually putting the thing in orbit, and it even extends to the end of life of that particular mission. So, I've listed a, a number of the activities here, but I'm going to jump into this next slide, because I think this is a really nice illustration, kind of give you a graphical representation of the different elements of the launch vehicle. Launch safety is, is paramount in importance, and what, what we've done here is we've listed these various topics, launch safety, orbital, reentry and disposal, range safety, and, and which entities are responsible for that. So for example, the launch safety, you know, through, through the point at which the spacecraft act, actually separates and is inserted into orbit, that belongs to the launch vehicle operator. Likewise, if you think about the orbital safety, and what goes on, on orbit with your particular vehicle, that belongs to the, the owner of the space vehicles. Range safety, of course, is, is the purview and remit of the launch range, and there's a lot of different things that go on with, with range safety and so forth. Also, reentry and disposal, that is, for the launch system, obviously, that's, that's the responsibility of the launch vehicle owner, and then likewise for the space vehicle or the satellite or the spacecraft or, or payload with regard to the rocket, that is the responsibility of the space vehicle owner. Now, all along the way, there's a lot of licensing going on, you have to get licenses to launch, you have to get licenses for your spacecraft. Audrey went through some things on spectrum that you absolutely must do in order to, to have a successful mission and get things off the ground, so to speak. So, don't forget, in addition to spectrum, you also have to think about what national security oversight is applicable for your, for your country, your state. Insurance, really, really important, especially, we've, we've, we've all seen some things happen, some really amazing fireworks from time to time, we don't, we don't like it when that happens, but it, it does happen, okay? And so, it's, it's really important that whoever owns all this equipment, all these expensive things, there we go, thinks, thinks about insurance, and I've already mentioned the launch and reentry. So, quickly, I'm going to go through these phases, and by the way, if, I know we're going through this very quickly, we just want to give you some high points to give you the information you need to, to manage the, the crisis simulation that's coming up. But if, if anybody would like to have copies of these, this presentation, then get with one of us, and we'll, we'll make sure that you get a copy of it, because I know we're going through a lot of material very, very quickly. But launching the spacecraft and getting it to orbit, or wherever it is that you're sending it, takes a lot of energy. So basically, you, you know, I, I know a number of astronauts, and they, you know, there's, there's this joke about, yeah, you're sitting on, you know, all these, you know, thousands and thousands of kilograms of, of explosive, and the whole thing was put together by the lowest bidder. So, anyway, that, it is the most dangerous aspect of the mission. There are many things that you have to think about when you're talking about ground safety, you have to make sure that the range is clear, you launch from places that are remote, you launch so that you don't fly over heavily populated areas, you have to make sure that you have an appropriate flight termination system, so that if something does go wrong, the launch controllers, range controllers have the ability to destroy that vehicle before it can do any harm to a populated area. Public risk is a really big thing, everything I've just said, you have to think about what risk you might be putting on the public that are in the vicinity of that, of that launch. On orbit, there, there are a lot of things that you have to think about. The number there on the chart, 400, 4,550 active satellites, well, we, we know that that's gone up a lot, that was as of January of 2022. So every time there's a Starlink launch, there's many more satellites, many more active satellites in orbit. So we have to keep track of all of that. There are a lot of things associated with remotely operating these vehicles that are in space. Of course, you have to think about, before you launch your orbital determination, how you're going to do that, how you're going to track it, you have to keep up with conjunctions so that you don't run into anything. And in the design process, you know, thinking about the space environment itself, and space weather, and how you have to design that vehicle so that it can withstand all of the, the, the really harsh environmental things that it will see, as well, you have to think about, what are you going to do if you get the thing on orbit and you have an anomaly? Likewise, at the end of life, okay, as a satellite approaches the end of its, its useful time period and you start to decommission it, you have to think about, how are you going to dispose of that spacecraft? If you're a spacecraft in geosynchronous orbit, are you going to raise that orbit and put it in a graveyard orbit beyond geo, or are you going to lower it, put it in a graveyard orbit there? Low Earth orbit, right now, it's agreed that you would be able to guarantee that your spacecraft would de-orbit in 25 years. I think it was last week that the FCC in the US announced that they want this to be five years, which is, which is, I lean more toward the five-year thing, because things are getting really crowded up there. At any rate, there are a number of different things that you could do at the end of life to de-orbit your spacecraft, or, or put it in a different orbit where it would be kind of not interfering with many other spacecraft. And finally, this material is based on this new Actors in Space Handbook that was published by the Secure World Foundation, there, the link is at the bottom of the slide, if you want to just download it, you can download it as a PDF, it's not a very large file at all. And I think it was also just last week, or maybe the week before, aerospace just published, the Center for Space Policy and Strategy just published a small satellite roadmap. And when I was talking about all these licenses and things that you have to do, that paper that was just published has some really nice flow charts talking about the, the steps you have to go through, what organizations are involved, when it's, when you're going through the licensing process. So, even though it's, you know, it's, it's focused on the United States and the various processes, you're going to launch a spacecraft for the Department of Defense, NASA, or commercial, it still is very helpful, you know, regardless, because it gives you an idea of the number of steps that you have to go to, to, just to get your vehicle out to the, to the, to the launch pad and put it up in the space. And with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Robyn. Do we?
We'll see if we have any questions. So, I, I think to give ample time for our crisis simulation, what we'll do is, once we head into the group discussion, the three of us will be kind of meandering around, and if you have a specific question based on this presentation, please flag us down, and we'll be happy to answer. That's probably the most efficient way to get you guys to the fun part, instead of us just lecturing at you. So, now we're going to put your newfound knowledge to the test. So, here we have a scenario, I'm going to read it out, I know that's tiny words, but we'll put this back up once we've given you your task. So this is all fictional countries and companies, none of this intended to be reminiscent of any particular real space actors, but this is going to be an example where we will divide up the room, each group will get the chance to talk about this scenario, and we'll have a list of questions for you to consider how this space framework would apply. So, it is September 19th, 2027, so five years in the future. One week ago, a company called Astrofuel performed a refueling mission for a geo-communication satellite belonging to the government of the country Brunei. Astrofuel had coordinated with its government, the country of Andova, for licensing on imaging and spectrum use for the mission. Astrofuel and Brunei had signed a contract to resolve liability issues and exchange technical information. Astrofuel accepted liability for any incidents occurring during, but not after, the mission. Neither Andova nor Brunei notified other satellite operators in adjacent orbital slots about the mission ahead of time, but Astrofuel had talked about it publicly in communications. Twelve hours after the servicing satellite had disconnected from the Brunei communication satellite, the communication satellite malfunctioned, and the ground station lost maneuvering control. control. The satellite has started to drift east towards geo-satellites belonging to another country, Carina. Brunei's satellite is still broadcasting, and the ground station cannot turn it off. So, it may soon start causing radio frequency interference, and even pose a conjunction risk to Carina's national and commercial satellites. And I'll put this back up on the screen shortly, for those who need a reminder. So, now, the table that you're sitting at is your team, your group, for this discussion. If you're alone, or there's only one or two people at the table, and you'd like to join another table to make that a slightly bigger group, please go ahead and do so. I'm going to divide the group into the different sections. So, the countries and groups that we'll have represented, one group is going to be the company Astrofuel, and that will be the tables right in front of me, and to my left, your right. So, you all, each of you is going to, in your discussions, be representing Astrofuel. We have these discussions here. Who's responsible for the incident? What's happening? What are you going to do to try to de-escalate the situation and resolve things? This group, the next column of tables, to my right, your left, these three tables, you guys are going to be the country of Andova, which is the country that is responsible for and regulating, thank you, Astrofuel. So, similar questions for you. The next row over, these tables right here, you guys are going to be the country of Brunei, the ones suffering in this incident. And then, finally, the other country, Carina, is going to be these tables in that back corner. So, you are the ones who have not been directly involved yet, but there might be a satellite careening towards Carina in a way that might interfere with you. So, how are you going to leverage the international space framework to respond? So, we're going to have about 15, 20 minutes for you to discuss in your groups, and then we'll reconvene to get perspectives from everyone. But like I said, the three of us are going to be walking around, answering questions, helping you out as needed, but get ready to talk about some space policy. Yes, yes, we are now, so, yeah, if you have questions, I'll go back to what you're supposed to be discussing, but this is the issue at hand.
So, we've got the scenario up. If any team wants us to flip back to the questions, just let me know, and I can go back and forth between the two. And Audrey's got a copy of the questions. Thank you.
................................. It's till we reconvene and prepare a speaker to represent your team. I'll be calling on each table, so we need one volunteer, or someone will get voluntold.